Okay, good evening. Everyone, thank you for your patience. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, February 10th, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For Selectmen's report, I'll be brief. I want to let the Board know that I had the privilege of providing yet another State of the Town address to the Board of Realtors last Wednesday. They are a fantastic group. They have their fingers on the pulse of what's happening here in town, so it was a privilege to be able to do that. Regarding the development of the Royal formerly Old Town Hall homes, we got information from the management partner, Imagineers, Mr. Arthur Anderson, that on or about March 16th, they expect to open the waitlist for the Royal. So they will be accepting the first 200 applicants. That will also include the members who are returning to that project. There's information on our website, and if you'd like to go to theroyaldariann.com to apply, you can find applications, waitlist applications there. And for those of you that live north of the Darien train station and east of the Darien train station, there's work underway this week with our consultants that are working on our sanitary sewer system, so you might see some folks out there on the streets. That's it for me.
Kate? Two things. At your next meeting, we're going to be coming in with a special appropriation request from the Police Department for $215,000 for major HVAC repairs, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And the waiting list renewal period for the parking permits has closed. We're kind of surprised at the number of people who did not renew their position on the waiting list, so I have a feeling we may have some people who are asleep at the switch. So, you know, we are prepared to accept late renewals on the waiting list for a period of time if we see them coming in, but it was rather surprising, the number.
Okay.
Other people might, yeah, maybe they just don't, and people move up that list pretty quickly.
Great, thank you. Okay, transfers. So you just said that we're going to be looking at a big appropriation.
Yes, this is, this is a minor.
Is this irrelevant because we're looking at the...
No.
Okay.
Separate.
All right. So we're looking at a transfer of $10,000 for the Darien Police Department from employee education to facilities, maintenance, and repair for work on the HVAC system, which what I'd really like to ask for, Kate, is an accounting of all the monies that we have spent, if it's possible to get us documentation on the HVAC system since that building is finished.
How many years would that be, roughly? Six years?
At least.
At least.
Has it always been permanent?
It has been problematic from the start.
Yes.
And, you know, the big knot in the next incoming is replacing one of the condensing units, but it has been problematic from the start.
Does anyone have questions on the need for this $10,000 transfer?
So this is going to be part of the bigger... This is in addition to the bigger... Oh, it's going to go toward that now $235,000? No, well, it'll be totally $225,000. Or 225, right. Yeah.
This is to cover unexpected costs that it looks like they've already incurred.
That they have already incurred. The next one is to do some proactive, and if you think when we talked about their account in the budget, I made mention of the fact that the estimate for facility maintenance repairs next year assumed that we were going to be doing some work at the end of this fiscal year. So that's the, the number that's coming to you in two weeks, that big $215,000.
It's a special, just for my education, it's a special appropriation because it's coming inter-year as opposed to being part of next year's budget capital.
No, well, no. A special appropriation is when the source of funding is not already appropriated in the budget. So we're actually going to be increasing the bottom line of the budget. A transfer is going from...
Right, so special, yeah, so I think we're saying the same thing. We're, we're increasing the bottom line of...
Of this budget.
This cap, this fiscal year's budget, not the one that we're looking to approve for next time.
Correct, correct, we're not approving, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
This is so that we can do it now.
Okay, perfect.
And it doesn't reduce any funds for next year?
No.
Is there, we can't take a reduction in facility maintenance and repair?
No, that was, the, the point was that, that budget assumed that we would do the work now.
The special appropriation.
Yes. So if you don't, if somehow that money doesn't get approved, you know, actually, the budget would need to be increased.
Okay, so I assume that we're going to receive a detailed report on...
Yes.
How that money's going to be spent.
Yes.
And then, I, I think that, I think it'll be shocking when we look at how much we've spent on that HVAC system in total.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this transfer? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Kip, may I have a second? Krista? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, reappointments. We have two reappointments this evening. Reappointment of James Millard and Michael Irvin to the Environmental Protection Commission, both for terms expiring on 6/30/2022. May I have a motion to approve their reappointments? Sarah, may I have a second? David? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, we have meeting minutes of January 21st. Any corrections or additions?
I have just one.
Yes.
In the first line after Town Administrator's Report, says Ms. Bush reported that, I take out the words "it is," I just saw what it reads, "reported that the renewal period for the parking permit waitlist was underway."
Yep.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Any other corrections?
Just diction.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended. David, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Any public comment this evening? Going once, going twice? Okay, no public comment. Agenda review. No additions? Okay, nope, okay. Moving on, then we will go right into our budget deliberations, which is part of our meeting agenda this evening. All right. Kate and Jen were kind enough to provide to us a spreadsheet of suggested modifications to the Board of Selectmen budget to date. Does anybody have any questions on the document that you received? Okay.
I always like looking at things through the reverse end of the telescope.
What does that mean, Kate?
That means that when things are thought of as positive, they're shown as negatives. Jen knows exactly what I'm talking about.
Yes.
We always have to get our head on backwards, but I think I followed it now after the fifth year of doing this. Thank you.
Okay. A couple of items for our discussion this evening. At full, first, let me, let me open it up to my board if you have any other budget items that you would like to discuss this evening for potential modifications.
I just had a question.
Yes.
With regard to parking fund, that does not include fees for permits for town-owned properties, does it?
No, it's not.
No.
Okay, that goes, where does that go?
That's in the general fund.
The general fund.
It's part, it's part of the Public Works Department.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I'll make sure.
Are we talking about, is all inclusive, any element, right, capital operating?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, I would be curious if we could, for the equipment replacement at the beach, we have been doing the, doing the consultant to help them formulate a plan. Would it make sense to have the remainder of the fund sort of in contingency until they have an operating plan to move forward with, not just having a consultancy, consultant produce a plan? I mean, because the parker commission will then have to take that plan and decide on how they wish to implement it, right?
Well, we don't have a firm cost yet for what a consultant would cost. We were ballparking at about five grand.
We're ballparking at about five thousand.
Yep. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that. Kate, what's the, what are the benefits or the challenges with putting a portion of that request, $25,000, let's say, into contingency?
I guess the only challenge I see is what, you know, obviously, you have to come forward with the transfer, it has to go before this board and Board of Finance. My concern would be, what is your trigger to say yes? Will we be, I think the Board should be clear on what, what they will consider sufficient to release the funds.
I have a point of view.
Yes.
I mean, I, I suggested that we have a consultant look at this. I mean, I do believe they should do that, but when it comes to saying, "Come back to us when you want to do it," to me, that's getting involved in their business. And I always viewed this commission, this board, and our role, and that of a Board of Directors, much like we always say, "You can have your nose in the tank, but you keep your fingers out." Management runs the business. We're here to provide oversight and policy review. We've told them that they should, we've recommended that this expenditure ought to be for a consultant first, and then they can make up their minds as to what they're going to buy. I think that's enough. I don't want to be here trying to figure out, well, did they learn enough? Are they prepared enough now to know what to buy? I think I'm, that's getting down into their business, and I don't think that's our role here. That's just my philosophy, but my philosophy on all Boards of Directors as well.
I do appreciate all the work that Pam Gary, the Director, has done to reach out to her colleagues across the state to find out about their concession stands. She's provided a great deal of information about that, and there's some interesting thoughts about providing, you know, basic informa, basic equipment and then letting vendors bring in specialty equipment, which could be one path that the commission chooses to, to go down. And there's things that can be addressed in the actual contract with whatever, whoever the chosen vendor is. For example, some of the different towns purchase the equipment but have the vendor pay for the maintenance of the equipment, which is an interesting concept in and of itself because obviously it's, the vendor causes the wear and tear. So I think there are some things that, that could be addressed through a good vendor agreement. I don't have a strong opinion one way or another about holding the funds in contingency or not. I feel most strong about taking the time to have an appropriate analysis done of the kind of equipment that is really needed in that facility and for the commission to talk about their sort of concession plan. What is it that they, they really want to provide and what equipment would be required to provide it? Anybody else have a viewpoint?
I just, you know, I just feel that you hire people to do a job. We provide guidance and policy and the funds. After that, if they don't do the job, they're gone. It's not a question of sitting here trying to give them their shoes and do their job for them. And I, and I feel the more we do that, the more we do a disservice and we bring, we hurt the morale of people who are trying to do the job. And it's, I mean, I've been on many Boards of Directors, and it's very clear when some boards try to get into the management operation, it always goes awry. And I would just as soon do the old camel phrase, nose is in, fingers out. And I think that applies here as well. We've told them the direct, the direction is, find a consultant, do an analysis, come back with a plan, and run with it. I just think that's what it ought to be.
Okay. Sarah, do you have a viewpoint?
I don't. The only question I would ask, you mentioned the commission, does the commission have to approve the purchases, or is this done through the Parks and Recreation Department?
They, I would say, you know, under our charter, the commission would not be required to approve the purchases. Depending on the dollar amount of the purchase, you might have to go out to bid, but these are all likely onto that, that dollar amount, so then it would just have to follow normal purchasing practice. They have to get a purchase order, it gets reviewed.
Right, just a curiosity.
Jamie, you mentioned work that Pam has done, reaching out to other municipalities and talking about how their agreements are structured and how they operate. Is that something that you all spoke with her about? Because I don't remember the...
Yeah, she provided that information to me.
Yeah, we asked her to do that.
Yep, yep. And we can, if you're interested in seeing that detail, you can take a look at it.
I guess that's one of the things I've been struggling with, because honestly, this capital request, as it's currently structured, doesn't have the level of specificity detail and thoroughness that I have seen from the other capital plans that were submitted this year.
Sure.
So it makes me feel a little, a little uneasy to approve a $25,000 sort of amount of that with a little more specificity, but if she's already done that work or started, you know, some level of that work, that would be interesting.
So the work that she did won't give you any more information about the specific plan? She just reached out to other communities to see, you know, do they go out to bid for their vendor agreements? Do their vendors provide equipment? Did they purchase the equipment there? So it's kind of high-level information, but it doesn't get at, what we need to know is how they're going to spend the $25,000.
Should have mentioned, she spoke to Greenwich, she presented us.
We can, we can share all that information with you. I don't think it's going to give you what, what you need. What I'm hearing here, though, is that we are, I think we're all in agreement with support, general support of the expenditure, it's just whether we put $25,000 in a contingency account or whether we, whether we don't. Now, we can take these, these modifications one at a time and vote on them if that's something that you would prefer to do.
Can someone just refresh my rationale for what is the, what, what's the stated reason for wanting to replace the existing concessionaire?
Because we don't, we don't own the equipment.
It's not necessarily to replace the existing concessionaire. We don't own the equipment, the, the concessionaire does, which makes it difficult for us to get competitive bids because anybody else coming in to bid has a rather high hurdle to pass. They've got to provide equipment to do with their, what they want to do. So we haven't been able to get competitive bids. We're kind of captive to the person who's doing it now. So by providing the equipment, now everybody's on the same playing field, we think we can do better. We can get more money for the town, perhaps a different product for the town than what we're getting now.
And they did vote to maintain at least the same type of...
Of, yes.
Delivery of service.
Yes.
So in the conversations that Pam had with the other municipalities, did she get a general idea of when they put something out for bid, how many people bid, the range of vendors that, right? Is that the other thing?
Yes, they are getting...
I know she's had conversations with Bruce, but I guess I'm just a little concerned about either not having any other bidders or only having a bidder that comes in, which doesn't give us much leverage over the economics of the replacement.
As I recall, all the replies stated that they, they all had a number of respondents to their, to their RFP. That wasn't a problem for any, any town that I read in her documentation.
I would agree with that.
And Pam has already represented to us that she knows that there are other vendors who would be interested in bidding here.
I'm just looking to see some of the specific...
We'll send that out to you.
Okay.
You can read it for yourself.
Yeah.
Any other issues that you'd like to discuss before I bring up a few? Anybody?
No.
Okay. So sticking with the, the beach theme, it seems that there is a consensus around when we do craft a vendor agreement that we should be raising the revenue expectation from the vendor. Currently, we receive $3,000.
Yes.
And from the information that Pam has gleaned, it would be very reasonable for us to up that number to a $5,000 revenue item. So I think we can safely increase the revenue for beach concession under building revenue by $2,000.
Didn't Pam say that the minimum bid that Greenwich accepts is 7,500?
Yes.
And they have one beach.
Greenwich has one beach? Oh, no.
No.
Greenwich has multiple beaches.
They have multiple locations, okay.
Yeah. But in looking at some of the other communities, I feel comfortable with five, especially for, you know, the first time we'd be bidding it out like this. I would expect, my ideal would be to put it out with a minimum, you must give us X amount of revenue as the basis, but really, it should be based on a percentage of their gross. So we'd accept no less than a minimum.
So a minimum, then the lesser of a minimum, more a percentage?
Yes.
Or the greater of a...
The greater of the minimum.
The lower percentage.
Which is consistent with traditional retail...
Yes.
Commercial leases.
May I ask, if we were to renegotiate this deal after, and then we get a new vendor, when would this new...
I thought it was the following year. The 2021 season. So it would be beginning in May of 2021, so in this budget.
So it's, okay, because it's before, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I had asked the question about, Kate, I don't think, you did move forward the fence at the drill tower, and I had asked the question about whether a portion of the $46,000 request could be offset from funds from the false alarm fund.
Right, and I think I suggested that maybe it would be easier to take out the concrete pad and suggest that they do that.
Okay, all right.
To remove that.
Is the false alarm account getting big enough to do that?
It's big enough to do about 20.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what we, when we discussed it Tuesday night, wasn't big enough to do the whole fence, so that's why we started talking about them, you know, sharing in the cost, and that's where the suggestion for the concrete pad came up, because that was a smaller amount.
I just saw the number, I just didn't remember that was the...
Okay, so it's...
All right, so I'm going to recommend that we eliminate the $20,000 request for the expansion of the concrete pad.
And that will just be a transfer.
No, we're going to suggest to them that maybe, that the fire departments agree to pay for that out of the false alarm fund.
Oh, so they just do that internally, that's...
Yeah, and we're still drawing the check, but it's not a budgeted fund.
Right, and we don't know if they're, if they will choose to do that or not, so, you know, it would be our decision to, to cut that $20,000 capital request. And, and I do want to say that, you know, I, I haven't heard this year from the commission if they have specific purpose in mind for the funds in the false alarm fund, so, you know, hopefully they can provide information to us about whether this is viable or whether they intend to use it for another purpose. Okay, let's talk about the, we have a number of people here from the library this evening. Thank you very much for coming. I think that many of you have been paying attention to our conversations and know that we've been struggling with the library's requested grant request this year, and we want to thank you for your consideration and for your retraction of the request to fund the truck, so we've already included that in our potential revisions. We've done some internal work to look at the numbers and try and think about your budget request in terms of equitable policy across your organization and the town's organization. And what I'm going to ask my Board to discuss this evening is if the Board has a willingness to consider an additional reduction to the library grant this year in an amount approximating $25,000 to make sure that our budgets, from a policy perspective, are utilizing equitable metrics on certain of your budget assumptions. So I know this is a difficult position for us to be in this year, it's a unique position. We have always supported your efforts, particularly over the last number of years, as you worked through salary equalizations with very significant wage increases for your staff so that you can continue to get excellent staff to want to come and work at the Darien Library, and we've been very supportive of those initiatives. We find ourselves in a little bit of a different position this year, and so I, I opened it up to my Board, excuse me, for a discussion on that, on that matter.
The basis of your recommendation is $25,000 based upon equalization of, or comparative increase in pay, including benefits?
Yes, comparative increases in pay to what we know are arbitrated settlements across the state, information that we get from our CCM organization, and anticipation of where wages will be coming in for our own organization. And, you know, looking at some of the extraordinary expenses in the budget request this year and, and how that request would equate to adjudicating it if we were looking at the same, the same employee with the same metrics on the town side and, and how that, that benefit would be provided to a town employee.
That's the 98.53 suggested here, right?
No, that was actually what the library had adjusted from their original to allocate part of the pension cost to funds. We don't have a number on here.
Oh, because I looked at the budget, I didn't see any changes in the top part of the budget, that's why I asked the question.
The $4,069,865 is the town administrator's proposed, and then right after that was put out, the library adjusted about a 98.53, and then the additional 36.5 for removing the truck.
Was, was the truck, and then you had a worker's comp reduction as well.
Right.
So...
That's the total amount.
I got from the library, $4,023, and you're sharing $4,021, I just want to know the difference.
Right, that, that difference is the $1,018 for...
Oh, okay.
Premium changes.
So the recommendation is to do another 25?
Correct. So where are we starting from now? Let me just make sure I understand again.
$4,021,594.
It's really a conceptual conversation that we need to have right now about how, you know, I've chosen to look at the budget and make that recommendation to you, philosophical conversation about looking at the budgets in an equitable fashion between the library and, and town policy. I know that we don't have an agreement in writing with the library at this time. We have always, I was asking Kate if she remembers, you know, the, when we agreed to pay the operating expenses. One of the challenges that, that, that we face and one of the reasons why I think it will be in our best interest for both organizations to have an agreement between us is so, you know, we're not a party to your hirings, we're not a party to the wages and the benefits that you provide to your employees, yet we pay for those in our agreement to pay for your operating expenses. So I think it would be beneficial for us to make sure that we can come to an agreement so that we don't have difficult conversations in the future.
Philosophically, I certainly have to support Jamie, your thoughts. I think it just is appropriate that we are looking... I think it just is appropriate that we are looking at, when we are funding staff, wherever that staff is, if we are taking on that responsibility, that we look at it as how we are approaching the town employees. And I think that's, or, or looking at the CCM members that Kate you had shared with us about those, you know, I think that's appropriate. So we would certainly have to support that. And personally, I'd like to look at, away from this discussion, grants in general, how we're looking at grants and the budget. I'd like to take that as an agenda item going forward. But for now, I think it's fair to the taxpayers of Darien that we look at this holistically.
Sarah? Given the size of this budget and that we are funding the operations, I would like to see philosophically a possibility of having regular conversations discussing financial matters when there is an increase to the budget that it doesn't show up in these, it shows up, you know, months ahead of time in earlier discussions. I would support that also. The reduction to match where the town is.
I have a point of view which is probably different. The library is obviously a very successful institution, and it's very well-liked, it has over 1,000 friends donations, donators each year, which is commendable. The library also serves many people beyond just the town of Darien. And when we're faced with taxpayer burden, we're saying, okay, if you're an organization that wants to help be a primary institution for Darien and also beyond, what's our level of responsibility for that? Now, you've got a good friends organization, you've built up a good endowment, you're doing a lot of capital work with the endowment, which is commendable. And the question for us, though, is what's fair to the taxpayer in terms of supporting the library? Is it at the same level that we support the town employees? Or is it because you feel that you, I heard for three years that you felt you needed to equalize the, the level of salaries because they were under, under the competition? But they've been raised. But that wasn't what was, came over in the, the recent addendum which talked about salary cost per item circulated. Well, I have no idea what that metric is, I'm sorry, I'm not a library person. But it seems to me there's a lot going on with the library, which is almost, if you will, for the county of Fairfield as well as for the town. Most of the benefit clearly is the town. So I, I feel that to the degree we get away from what we're dealing with here in the town, we ought not to. We ought to try to bring it back to where, what we, we do here. If we're saying everyone gets a 5% increase, everyone in the library should be in that same vein. If we're saying, no, we're going to be at this level instead, I would like to see it be in the same vein. If there's more to be done, the friends certainly can step up and do that, it seems to me. And you certainly have a lot of people who are very interested by the list you have of your friends to do that. So that's my perspective at least. It's a bigger perspective, it's not looking at the, at the specifics, but I think it sort of goes to the same heart of where you're going.
Sure.
I think we have to recognize the library, they don't have a choice to whether they serve as Darien or the extended area. But I do agree with the, where you're going with that thought also. But just acknowledge.
But they're well-known in the area, aren't they?
Oh, very much, I'm sure.
They're one of the busiest libraries in the state, right?
Yes.
But it's not their choosing to go outside, I mean, it's not a, it's not a choice.
But they didn't choose to be the worst library in the state, they chose to be one of the best, and that's commendable.
You're blessed with that.
They're blessed, and so.
But we'd have to say in fairness, though, to your point, and I, I understand your point, Kip, you know, we accept out-of-town participants in the senior program.
No questions.
You know, we allow out-of-towners to enjoy our beaches and parks. So, you know, I think that that spirit of sharing our resources is something that is kind of fundamental to our collective organizations. My, listen, the only thing that I'm trying to do here is to, our, our job, because this is a grant, and once we give the grant, you guys use the grant however you see fit. We don't have, you know, ability to direct you in that way. But my job, our job, is to make sure that the, what you've requested and what we're willing to fund is we look at it in an equitable fashion in the same way that we are adjudicating the rest of our budget. So I think that that's, that's our job tonight. David, to your point of view?
Don't have any to add.
Okay, all right. So we'll take a final vote on these things tomorrow evening. So I'd like to leave that potential cut on the table for tomorrow evening.
Other items?
What else?
I would like to go and just talk about the Cherry Lawn half court.
Yes.
I'd like to make sure we have enough money to get it done.
Yes.
I mean, I, it's time to do it.
Yep.
We've talked about it, we're not going to do a full court for all the reasons we've talked about, but let's do the half court right.
So.
And make sure they have enough money to do it.
We have some information about that.
Oh, good.
That's good to hear.
I believe at our last meeting, we agreed to reinstate $15,000 in total. And we, Pam did a quick turnaround on some estimates for a renovation to the existing facility, and that can be accomplished for the $15,000, maybe less, if some of the work is done with in-house labor.
Okay.
With that $15,000 that we considered.
So it's a good number.
It's a good number, and they estimate the fix, if we keep the court clean, we have mold, et cetera, the fix should, the court should last another 10 years.
Yes.
Good.
Yep. So it'd be nice to, you know, at some point, hopefully, the Parks and Rec Commission will move forward a plan to build a full court somewhere in one of your parks. So we might be able to end up with a full court, thank you all very much for coming, a full court and this smaller court amenity for the town.
Well, that's great.
Okay.
No, I, because I, I just felt we may, we pulled the number out of here last time we weren't sure.
Yep.
Okay, if you can do it, that's great.
So I guess the idea is where we would build the half court basically on the same location, but just?
Do repairs to, do repairs to the existing court, put an overlay on it?
Create it as necessary and keep it as far away from the tree that we're concerned about.
For the trees.
It wouldn't be moving away from the tree.
They would actually, we, we're going to have to have our tree warden go out and take a look, but they're talking about removing some of those roots that are encroaching on the court, patching the asphalt to level it, and then putting a surface over the top with lines and fixing the basketball standards. So it should be a nice fix.
I personally don't care where it goes. I think they had some options, but a little bit to your conversation before, wherever they want to put it is fine. I think we're supporting the idea that there will be a half court somewhere.
Right, and we now know we can definitely get it done for under $15,000.
Yeah, yeah.
There's totally enough to manage.
Yeah, no, I would agree, I think the service we should provide to the town.
I, I want to, you know, acknowledge here that kind of to Kip's point, the Board of Selectmen did get in the weeds a little bit on this issue with the Parks and Rec Commission. But we did that because one of the budget requests, the $10,000 budget request for the demolition of that court sort of ran counter to how we all feel is a good fiduciary responsibility. We don't typically spend money to deconstruct things unless there's something that's going to be constructed in its place or it's tied to another project. So, you know, I acknowledge that we got a little bit into the weeds, but I think the outcome will be a good one for the public. Anything else? Any other items?
The board did have the $10,000.
We did not go forward.
The demo is taken out.
Yep, so we, we added back.
Right.
15.
Just a back.
In the back of the?
Yeah.
Like 200 something.
On 207?
We didn't put it forward, though.
The R, the capital R.
I never put it forward.
Yeah.
Oh, you never even?
Kate didn't put forward the $10,000 for the demo.
Got it, okay.
Right.
Staying with, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Maybe we're, I was moving beyond, I mean, moving toward tennis away from basketball.
Okay.
Okay. The tennis courts.
Yes.
So that was the other issue, and we talked about, now with the high school, looking at their tennis courts, is there any efficiency we can achieve or looking at this more holistically?
We think so.
Yay!
We think so. So what I suggest is, you know, we had talked about doing the front courts only.
Let me take a step back just for the public, that the Board of Ed budget has a capital request with this year, status one of 525, I think.
Something like that.
To redo their tennis courts. So put it in context.
Right.
Someone's coming to town.
Someone's coming to town for a half a million dollars to build a high school tennis courts.
It's timely.
So just bring them on over.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's the idea, so I, we had talked about doing only?
We were about painting the back ones.
The back ones. And the estimate to do just the?
We taught, we supported doing the front courts.
And the estimate to do just the front courts is 36. It's not quite ha, it's a little bit more than half of what the request was.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
So I would suggest you leave the 36 in there so that we can, we have the funds that we can, when the Board of Ed is ready to go big, we go out along with them. You know, we include our painting in the bid, and hopefully we'll get it for less than 36, but at least we have the funds to do it.
And that includes painting and a little bit of leveling, I think they talked about, right?
Yes, yes. But the, I think the, the company that gave the Board of Ed the quote that they used for the budget may be the same one that installed these courts or does a lot of these kind of courts.
There are not too many around.
But is there, I mean, because it also came up in conversation, not the parking rec didn't put it forward, but the weed beach courts. This is the weed beach courts?
I'm sorry, Cherry Lawn. They didn't put it forward, they, but.
But in thinking that if, if the schools are looking to redo their courts, should we, does Park and Rec know? And is there any cost savings to also look at Cherry Lawn now?
So those are not post-tension, post-tension courts now?
Correct.
Oh.
So we'd be talking about possibly a whole rebuild of those.
Rebuild, okay.
So I don't think the time is now.
Not this year, right.
They also talked in Parks, they, they do want to look at the parks kind of as a whole, when they, when they go to do work, to do the, you know, to do the whole thing.
Oh, no, absolutely, it's just because the timing synced with half a million dollars for the school, that's why.
Yeah.
I was thinking, should we expand the scope to pull in Cherry Lawn? But it's a different surface than?
I, I'm not certain, but I do believe that when the Parks Commission gets to the point of addressing a new full-size basketball court potentially at Cherry Lawn and a reconstruction of the tennis courts at Cherry Lawn, they'll be looking at post-tension concrete
Okay.
for those facilities, but I'm not 100% certain.
Okay. But there was no savings, at least the painting, we could pay you back.
Right.
That's good, that's great.
What else? Anything else?
No.
David?
The yellow lines, though, were you going to talk more?
From what?
EMS motorized equipment repair.
The yellow lines were, were these things that weren't originally?
Right, they, these are items that have
Been added.
come to our attention since we last met, so.
Right. I just wanted to talk about those.
So, so Kate or Jen, do you want to run through these for the public?
I don't actually have it in front of me, so.
Sure, I can do it. So the first one is emergency medical services on page 126. We're suggesting adding a motorized equipment repair and maintenance account, which is common in other departments. We pay for the paramedic vehicle, paramedic vehicle, they are eligible to have that car wash, wash, that car washed at our expense, so we recommend that we put in enough to cover one car wash per week for the year, which would be $986. So is that be a separate line item you want to add?
It'd be a new line item, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And where is it washed at the town?
It is at Lash.
We have an agreement with them?
We have an, we have an agreement with them.
I'm just curious.
I thought maybe we had the ability to do it at the town. No, those, the town garage is built for the, the big trucks.
The wash base.
You don't want to wash it in there.
Yeah.
But we do have a, we do have a, some kind of a contract agreement with the car wash operator?
We agreed upon price, we used to bid it out and found that we actually switched the method this year and found that we're saving over the method we used in the past. They were the only ones who ever bid.
Okay, good.
The next few are all related, the last number that you see for the library, the reduction of 1,918, and then the whole risk management section, which covers our liability auto and property accounts as well as our workers' comp. At the end of last week, we received from current rate changes, premium rate changes, so the liability auto and property is up 3%, the workers' comp is down 5%. So these are the estimated impact of those rate changes.
Worker's comp must be experienced, huh?
Yes, it is experience-based.
It's great, because yes, you're a big number.
Yeah.
Big number.
Can we get another page, 191?
Yeah. Well, when we're done, we will give you all new pages. Wherever there were changes, you'll get new pages.
On the approved budget.
Yeah, on the budget that gets submitted to the Board of Finance.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Which isn't the approved budget, yeah.
No, no, I said, I should say the Board of Selectmen approved budget.
Yeah.
So with, if there, if there's no other recommended modifications this evening, you know, acknowledging that we have another evening of deliberations and a final vote tomorrow night, Jen, can you give us an idea of where we are?
Sure.
With the modifications that have been proposed?
Including the $25,000 reduction for the library and the $2,000 increase on the concession, your expenditure budget would be which is a reduction of $5,770 over the prior year, 0.01% decrease.
Prior year revised or, or original?
Adapted.
Okay.
The other number of interests, the taxes required to fund the budget would be a reduction of $581,988 over the current year, which is a 1.53% decrease. And the mill rate to support the Board of Selectmen's budget would be 4.40, which is a 0.13 decrease from last year, down 2.87%.
This is a big reason right there.
All right. I'd like to give members of the Board of Finance and Finance and Budget the opportunity to ask questions this evening. Should you have any? Do you want it right now?
No.
Okay. Okay, so do you have any questions for us? Any concerns? Anything that we should be considering that we haven't? Okay. I know things will come up in your meeting, Jack.
For one thing that I think that you had mentioned is that you're going to identify items to be further items to be financed either with bonds?
Correct.
Or with excess reserves or unencumbered reserves?
Correct.
Would that come prior, would that list come prior to your vote or subsequent to that vote?
No, that'll come subsequent to our vote. That will come when we deliver the budget to the Board of Finance.
These are things that are in the budget.
Yeah.
No, I'm understanding, I'm understanding.
If, if I might add to the list, it's not just bonding, it's not just use of general fund funds[1711.23] fund funds, but it is taking a look at the reserve fund for capital and not repairing the expenses and possibly looking at what excess reserves are there to be employed to have.
Do we have excess reserves in that fund? That can be utilized?
Well, the Board of Finance, Jen is sending it out right now. They review the capital projects that have been approved in the past and ask departments to update the status of the projects and based on that, they will close out some projects.
Okay.
There's also the contingency fund within, the contingency account within the reserve fund. So those are potential sources, revenue sources for the capital fund.
But the Board of Finance takes that step.
Yes, it's a Board of Finance request.
Yeah, okay.
But they could decide to reduce the amount needed from the general fund to cover all the capital projects by using other revenue sources within the capital fund.
Yes.
Right, I just wanted to mention it because it is another potential source, but that will be at the discretion perfectly.
Correct. With the objective that, you know, if we have monies available and we can reduce the amount that we need to tax for these requests, that we should use those monies first.
Exactly, spot on.
But I also believe in bonding for certain projects.
Fully agree.
I'm sorry, I wanted to back up a second. Going back to our proposed changes on the finance side, so we're going with the change. What assumption are we working with now?
We chose to, with David's information analysis and the four scenarios that Joan provided to us, we opted to go with Joan's scenario number two.
Which is correct.
That's a hundred and seventeen.
Yeah.
For the income.
We're not using scenario one. But we have scenario one in the spreadsheet.
It's a hundred, it's an increase in revenue.
It is scenario two.
Scenario number two.
On that first line, yeah.
Correct.
It would increase revenue by a hundred and seventy-five, thereabouts.
Right, the dollars that you have there are correct. I've incorrected. Okay, so we're in a scenario one. So at this point, the Board is deciding not to go with the town's proposed, we are going with David's.
Yes, we're modifying the revenue assumption, but, you know, to honor the work of the treasurer, we are going with one of the scenarios that she, you know, she did some analysis and provided different scenarios, but based on the work that David did, we're recommending a slightly less conservative assumption. Do you have that document, do you recall that?
Oh, yeah, no, no, I just remember if we talked or voted on it, I just wanted to make sure.
We haven't voted on any yet.
Right. All right, but we're working with that assumption.
Yes, correct. Okay, are there any other items for budget discussion this evening, either from the Board or from members of Board of Finance, Finance and Budget? No, okay. Hearing none then. Alan, do you have something that you'd like to say?
I'd like to make double comments if possible.
Please come forward.
Thank you. Yeah. I've got a couple of Mrs. Paper that I'll be sharing if you would like it. So, Alan Gray, Director, Darien Library. I've got a couple of comments that I'd like to make just in looking at the Darien Library's budget in the context of the way the town budgets, but a couple of other issues came out first that I'd like to speak to. One relates to non-resident use of the library and what financial effects there might be on the town. And we've, we've looked at that fairly often because we do have a significant amount of non-resident use of the library. Almost all of it is related to taking out books or using computers or something like that. All of those are things that are paid for by the friends, so there isn't a direct cost to the town for that use of the library. When someone prints, they pay for it, but those are, those are copiers whose leases are paid for by the friends, the ones that are out in the public. The library's desk staffing, there are, from my memory, about eighty-five percent of the hours that the Darien Library is open, and that's seventy-two hours a week, there is only one person on desk. There aren't multiple people on desk. So, yes, there are more people in the library, but we can't, we're not increasing our staffing because of that. As, as you say, most of the time, it's just for the one, it's one person on desk, you can't reduce it below that. On weekends and things like that, we have two people, but that's when we have active use as well, so that our, our desk staffing is exactly the same. As a reminder, we have self-checks, so about eighty-five percent of the books that are checked out of the library are checked out on machines and are returned that way, so there isn't any staffing related to that as well. So, so the way that I look at it, and this is only half in jest, that I suspect that the only additional cost to the town from the use of the library by non-residents is for toilet paper. There's no way for us to distinguish that. I have not ever offered to do that analysis and I don't think anyone else wants to do it. But that, so I would, I would just say, I'd also, I'd also say that we get a pretty significant amount of funding from the state because of our non-resident use, but that goes because of the books that we are lending and things like that. We get, we get donations to the friends from that, but, but there aren't any additional costs to the library from non-resident use of the library that we're able to determine. Second, there was a question about Darien Library's staffing compensation this year, the three percent, and, and I understand that it can be really attractive to find a way to make an exact equilibration between the Darien Library staff and people in the town or somewhere else. I'll just make a couple of points that it's a pretty subtle issue. Kip talked about the quality of the staff, that is something that's important. The other thing that I would say is that the friends over the years have made major significant investments in technology, both in computers and the sorting system that reduce our staffing. That's why our FTE count is very, very low. We have a significantly fewer number of clerical people than other libraries our size because we have machines doing those, machines paid for by the friends, so that we have a higher percentage of knowledge workers. Now, as a reminder, anyone in the library who has a patron-facing job, first of all, all library employees work thirty-seven and a half hours a week. Everyone has a patron-facing job, works one night a week and one weekend a month. No one, except a few people who are grandfathers who worked in the old library, get any additional compensation for working on Sundays, there aren't Sunday hours or anything like that, that's part of a normal work week. So that, I think that it's worth looking at all of that in context before making a judgment about what is the exact equilibration. I think those are just worth, that, it's worth a conversation, but I think it's, it would, it would be worthwhile to get into that pretty deeply before someone made a judgment, this versus this as an exact equivalent. And then I came prepared just to talk about the library's budget. So what I've got here, is, is a copy of the latest budget before the nineteen hundred dollars that, that Kip...
Don't trip.
So you could pass these out in both directions and pass those out in both directions. One is the latest budget that was actually also in the piece that, that we sent over, but what I've got is, I might do that copy myself. I've got a way of asking you to look at the library's budget in the same context as the way you look at the town budget. So that's the 2021 budget component layout. This is obvious. For the expenditure budget for the town, you look at four different categories, what people call the operating expenditures, and then general overhead and miscellaneous, and then financing, and then cap. Financing and, and capital don't enter into the way that the library does it, but, but what I did is on the top half, the lines one through nine, I took, I took the individual town departments and took the revised budget for 1920, compared it to the 2021 budget. This is what came right out of the original budget, there have been some adjustments, I think a lot of them have been to revenues and expenditures, and just showed the percentage change of what I'd call the operating budgets. Then there's general overhead and miscellaneous, and compared the general overhead and miscellaneous in the revised budget to that, and then, and that's, that's that increase. If you look at total town government, looking at these two elements, there's a three point six three percent increase in those areas. Now, look at the Darien Library budget. If you take out of, and, and, look, our budget is a five point three two percent increase, that's a huge increase, there's no getting around it, I'm not trying to do anything other than give you a context with which you would look at it. The, the, the equivalent to the town operating budgets for the library would be almost flat because what you take out of the operating budgets and put into general overhead and miscellaneous is the benefits, then you take out insurance, and then you have a contingency which in, in the library, which, which goes to salaries that aren't committed by negotiation or anything like that. And we do have some increases in the library's budget that are committed, it's around thirty thousand dollars, those are people who got an increase halfway through the year because they were promoted. So we go, the library goes by anniversary dates. If you're hired on January first, then your anniversary date is next January first, right? So if there's a three percent increase, your three percent increase doesn't kick in until January first, so you get functionally one and a half percent effect. That just plays out. But, so then what we move down from, in the library are, are all of our benefits, the town insurance that just was reduced by nineteen hundred dollars, and then all of the salaries and, and essentially all of the library's salaries are merit because we say that the range is going to be three percent, but it ranges from above four percent down to zero at times. So those, those go down in the general overhead and miscellaneous. So line ten is the library's operating budget, the zero point three percent year to year. Eleven is the general overhead and miscellaneous, not including the eight hundred pound gorilla in our budget, which is the vacation that I, the vacation days that I've gotten up. That is a three, thirteen point nine percent, seven percent increase, that's because of two major items. One is the increase in the town retirement, and second, it's because that's fifty-two thousand dollars in the, that's what the three percent of the budget represents. So if you then look at line twelve, our budget, not including my vacation days, is an increase of three point one seven percent. That is, I'm not, I'm just asking you to look at it, every budget is unique and should look at it in its own context, but I'd like you all to be looking at the Darien Library's budget, apples to apples rather than apples to oranges, one clump, three point, five point three two, and the other. And then line thirteen is the eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars that's in there for my, my vacation days that have... You were very kind when you said a couple nights ago that we don't make this personal, so we won't make this personal, this is not about Alan Gray, let's say it's about the idiot director of the library who did not tell you a year or two in advance, Kip's point, about the fact that this was coming. That's, that's my responsibility and my fault, but the point that I want to make is that increase from three point one seven to five point three two percent doesn't bear on the other parts of the library. The library's budget, as it is year in and year out, is in line with the town's budget, the town department's budget. The outlier is, this year, simply the, the amount that I've gotten. I am not a, I am not a town employee. As I understand, what would be the case if I were the town employee, I would have the right to those. I would also have the right, I believe, to take my unused sick days, if we don't do that in the library. So that's it. It's on me that this was not knowledge that you had in advance, but I want to make sure that you don't look at the rest of the library's budget in the context of saying, it's five point three two, we have to cut somewhere. So the, the, the reduction that you are going to take, if you're going to take a reduction, as you say, it's a single-line item, but it will, it will, at my insistence, come out of my vacation days because the rest of the library's budget should not suffer because of the mistake that I made by not telling you about that. Yeah, so I just wanted to make these points clear. When you look at our budget is, when you look at the main line of the library's budget, it's exactly in line with the other town departments. And, you know, each one has its own basis, I'm not trying to draw any distinctions, I'm just saying it's best if you can look at the library's budget in the same context.
Thank you, I appreciate that information, Alan, and I actually think that we have been very thoughtful in how we've been looking at the library's budget and not making, you know, a unilateral determination based on the bottom line, five point three two percent being too high. I think we've done a good bit of analysis in order to try and come up from a policy direction, you know, what we believe is the right equitable way to look at the budget. So, you know, I would agree, and you always do a very good job of showing us the efficiencies in the library and how you manage well the operating of the library itself. There just happens to be two issues where I think we have a fundamental disagreement on policy, and, you know, I would be very happy to show you the analysis that went behind my recommendation so that you can see what weighs on me.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just say that what I know is that the federal government increase for 2020 for the, the levels that relate to the Darien Library knowledge workers in this area is a three point six one percent increase. That's just the way it is, right? So, yeah.
Where does that, where do we get that information?
The federal, federal government increase for its employees is a two point six percent overall increase, standard. Then there are regional increases for different areas. If you average those across the nation, those come out to three point one percent. When you look at the New York area, however it's described, there is a thirty, I believe it's a thirty-three percent increase above that, just for a cost of living in this area. So that's how I calculate that the federal government equivalent is, this would be, I believe, three point five or three point six percent.
And I can assure you that that's not how wages are determined from a municipal government perspective.
Not, not disagreeing with you at all, it's just the way that, that I looked at, as I said earlier, on the second point that I wanted to make is that the context within which we look at the Darien Library is it's one of the most significantly accomplished staffs in the nation, it is far and away in this area, the most financially effective library staff. We are twenty to fifty percent less expensive than, than our competition. We can only compare it to our competitors. If I look at other things, like the amount that, that the town of Darien pays for a circulation for a book compared to Greenwich and Stanford and things like that, I can give you that sort of data too. That's the only equivalence that we can do. We have an amazingly effective staff, which with a combination of the investments by the friends in technology are very, very efficient. We have fewer FTDs because of that, we have higher level employees because of that, and probably then the low, the amount is lower, but, but the increases are something that we have to do to, to be able to attract the same kind of people.
I'll make you a trade.
Yep.
You tell our people how to be as efficient.
Yep.
And you'll get the whole amount.
What makes you think we are not as efficient?
Yeah, Kip.
I'm offended by that, actually.
I actually...
I think our employees are every bit as wonderful as the library employees.
Yep.
Well, I didn't mean to have you feel badly about that.
Just to be clear, I compared our library staff to other libraries. As I said very carefully, there's no way to compare a library employee to anyone working in any department in the town, I'm not trying to do that.
Will you share the hours?
This is not, this is not a zero-sum game. It's each, each area of the town ought to be looked at as an individual area, what I'm trying to ask you to do is look at it in the same context as you look at others in, in the context of what they're doing, rather than this as a single one. Yeah. The library has never, ever made a negative statement about any other element of the town.
We're grateful that you haven't done that.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your information. Okay, are there any other comments for tonight's meeting?
Just to pass out the blank resolution for tomorrow.
Okay.
We will fill in the numbers tomorrow night.
Are we going to do this one at a time or we just...
We'll go through the cut list, and then this is the, this is the formal resolution, that's the form, I just wanted to get a bit of a way with the form.
Okay.
Of the resolution.
Okay.
But we will go through the cut list.
Do we go one at a time and then...
It'll be your choice.
Yeah, right.
One at a time.
Sure.
Okay, hearing no other comments this evening, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah, may I have a second? Kip? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Kate and Jen, thank you very much. Kate and Jen, thank you very much.